Good evening and thank you for viewing.
And the county for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19. We are leading by doing. We are masking up to protect each other and the most vulnerable in our community and practicing social distancing. These two fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open, not to mention supporting frontline essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged on to Zoom meeting webinar, click on raise hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. You can access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. You may also submit written comment via email address to PC@cityofarcada.org. Your email will be forwarded to the planning commission, but commissioners may not receive your emails before deliberating or rendering a decision if the decision is made the day of your comment. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner of the State, Elcock.
Here.
Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yeah.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
Welcome back. And Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
And Chair Taggney.
Are we good?
All present.
Okay, for some reason, Director Loy, I can't hear you.
Let's see if I can adjust my audio settings. Is anyone else having a hard time hearing me? Maybe try clicking on the little carrot symbol next to the microphone.
Oral communications.
I'm sorry, you were muted, Chair.
Am I coming through to you, David?
You are. You were muted for a bit.
All right, now I hear you. I'm sorry for the delay there.
Okay.
We have no oral communications, is that what I heard?
We do not have oral communications as far as I know. Let me check the participants list. No early oral communications.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is our consent calendar. And the only thing on our consent calendar is to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from our regular meeting on October 13th, 2020. If we don't have any changes, can we have a motion to approve those minutes? Or to approve the consent calendar, sorry?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Commissioner of the State, Elcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Aye.
And Chair Taggney.
Aye, motion carries. And now we'll move on to the public hearing of which we have none, which moves us straight into the business items for the evening. And the item on our list for business items is the local coastal program update number four. Can we have a staff report on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, this is the fourth update. We've been taking the zoning ordinance for the coastal portion of the city, piece by piece. And in this agenda, we have before you the agricultural chapter, the I'm sorry, cultural resources, the amendments section, and archaeological sections for you to review. And so I guess the, you know, a couple of things. I've got the report here. I can share that on the screen if you'd like. If you have anything in particular that you'd like to talk about. I think the one thing that I'd like to remind commissioners of is that, again, we are attempting through this update to include the sort of minimal zoning necessary in order to review coastal development permits and regulate uses inside the coastal zone. And so you'll note that these chapters are relatively slim. And so, for example, the archaeological and cultural resources section, starting on packet page eight, essentially just describes the screening process and consultation process that we'll go through with the tribes. This doesn't change the underlying requirements that we have associated with AB 52 for consultation with SEQA or SB 18 or Section 106 when we undertake federal projects. And so all of those requirements, the federal and state requirements that we're obligated to consult, will also be conducted for projects within the coastal zone. But we've added what we feel like is a minimum zoning ordinance here to allow the coastal commission to concur that our zoning ordinance is consistent with the coastal act. And so it does provide some description on if cultural resources were discovered or some inadvertent discovery protocol here. For agricultural resources, as you're well aware, agricultural resources is one of the sort of largest subject areas for the coastal act. It's one of the reasons why the coastal act was adopted, enacted. And so we do have quite a bit of detail in the agricultural resources section. Coastal Commission has not provided feedback. They've seen these sections. They haven't provided feedback yet on these. But I do want to point out that, you know, we've got some requirements. For example, on packet page 11, where we have special requirements for agricultural land subdivision. And in fact, when the sea level rise section comes back around and we're looking at those, you'll find that subdivisions on agricultural lands are even further restricted because of the provisions associated with sea level rise. But the intent of this section is really to ensure that ag resources stay in agricultural zoning and stay in agricultural production. We have some slight variations on how these lands are treated with respect to growth and development. And then I won't go into detail on the coastal zoning local program, local coastal program amendments unless you have specific questions. But I did want to just touch base on our overall zoning. I know this has been of particular interest to the commission. Can you tell me, can you see the full screen? Or do you still see the individual slides?
We see one single title that says coastal zoning, and then we have our photos still along the side on the right.
Okay, perfect. That's, that was the desired outcome. So I know this has been of particular interest, and I think that, you know, Commissioner, Vice Chair Mayor in particular has pointed out it's a little difficult to understand, you know, some of the coastal zoning details without specifically going into what is the zoning. We've had a lot of work on coastal zoning up to this point. And so I just wanted to kind of give a quick synthesis of where the conversation has been up to this point and to sort of point towards the direction that we think we're heading based on that input. So just wanted to share with you the overview map of the coastal zone. Oops, back up here. And I am going to shrink my view of you all. So if you have a question, please just interject. I won't be able to see you asking me a question. So currently, citywide, this is the zoning in the coastal zone. You'll see the grayed out images of our city and the road systems, the highway network in orange and the main arterial roads in yellow here. You may recognize some of them. You know, here's Sphere. Here's Alliance out to K Street. There's the Samoa Corridor and then Old Arcata Road. And here's the peninsula with the wastewater treatment plant at the very tip and some of our industrial lands in the coastal zone here back up around, you know, here's the community park in Health Sport. And then here's the Baylands. So we're going to take a look at each of these individually. I just wanted to orient you and give you a sense for where these coastal zone properties are at. Now, I haven't shown you the zoning for the rest of the city here. This is only the zoning in the coastal zone. And it's important to note that this is the current zoning designations in our 1989 Coastal Land Use and Development Guide. And so these do not reflect the land use code designations, and these do not reflect the land use designations necessarily that we want to see moving into the future.
Is it correct and that that's the reason that you don't have any colors on most of those areas that just don't have any color on them? But that are apparently within the coastal zone?
Everything that's outside of the coastal zone does not have a zoning designation in this map. That's correct.
Okay, but it does appear that there are also some places within the coastal zone that also has no zoning designation or at least no color.
All of the areas within the coastal zone and within the City of Arcata's jurisdiction have a color associated with them based on the zoning district that they fall into. Does that make sense?
Um, not, not unless things have changed more since 1989 than I think they have. Maybe I'm having trouble with the colors on my screen.
Okay, we're going to go into detail on each of these as well. So
Okay.
So maybe, maybe as we get into those areas where, you know, you have questions, you can target in on those. So here we are at the corner of Sphere and Alliance. There's a block of properties that are in the coastal zone. Sphere and Alliance form the boundary of the coastal zone here. And so all of these properties that are in gray that you see are outside of the coastal zone. And all of the properties in this block are inside the coastal zone. These properties are agricultural exclusive. We're not proposing any changes to the zoning type there. These properties in lighter gray are rural residential. This is equivalent to our residential very low density zoning in the land use code. We will, in the update, be changing these from base zoning districts. So for instance, instead of having agricultural exclusive as the base zoning district, this will have a overlay. So it'll be a colon CAE, colon coastal agricultural exclusive. That overlay zoning district will go on top of the underlying zoning district that is formed by the land use code. So I wanted to point that out. Some of these districts are going to be the same. AE will look the same. It'll just have a C in front of it. Rural residential will change entirely. We're not going to have a rural residential in the new zoning code. It'll be residential very low density. So those will match with our existing zoning types. This yellow area here is residential low density, and that will carry forward into the new zoning. And so right now, we haven't proposed any zoning designation changes here. The way that the residential very low density zoning district was designed, it was supposed to be a transitionary zoning district between the more urban and denser areas with the more rural agriculturally zoned areas. And so that's what this buffer represents. Over time, this may be an area, and if the planning commission wants to open the discussion as to whether this area should be upzoned from residential very low density to, you know, higher designation, like maybe residential low or maybe even something higher, that's to your discretion. At this point, the community dialogue has not included upzoning any of these or changing the zoning other than to make them comport with the land use code. I did want to point out that there's a commercial general property here. Some of these properties may get changed to a mixed-use zoning district to allow for residential uses to occur on those properties. Is on that area that's up in the north side of the coastal zone? Okay, so moving on. Now we're looking at the very few properties that are left to the west side of town that are still in the coastal zone. Not going to spend any time on these. These are AE and public facilities, a little bit of residential low density. We're not planning to change that. Moving to the other side, so now we're looking at this block that's, you know, around Old Arcata Road here. And you see, interestingly, some of our higher zone districts are clustered in this area. Again, with the commercial general, we've talked about, you know, adopting some mixed-use designations for those to allow for densification in particular of housing units. But we haven't really looked at changing any of the zoning in these areas. Again, we have this rural residential zoning district, you know, those areas in concept may be suitable for upzoning. In this particular zoning district, there's actually Alquestriela Fault Zone and various other factors, some natural areas that staff doesn't recommend upzoning these. Rural residential, these will just be, continue to be residential very low density.
David, did you say you're going to get rid of the rural residential description totally?
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to change the description so that they're consistent with the land use code designations. If I were to go in and turn on the land use code zoning on these properties right here, there would be parity with the density of uses on those sites. They just have different names, and so we want to streamline the naming conventions. Okay, and I'm sorry, just going back real quick. Again, you know, this is the Baylands, our AE's zone of the Baylands. This is all city-owned property. Not planning to change the designation there at some point. That'll go from AE to, to natural resources more than likely as, you know, sea level rise impacts the ability of these lands to sustain agricultural uses. Moving into this area, which is sort of the core central business district you see here and surrounding areas that have medium density zoning, and then a whole lot of industrial, commercial. This is analogous to our industrial limited zoning district or industrial heavy, which is analogous to our industrial general zoning district. I wanted to, you know, just pause on this part for a moment just to remind you that this area around K Street and Samoa Boulevard, north of Samoa Boulevard, including potentially some of these properties that are right along Samoa Boulevard, are part of the infill planning work that we've been doing. These are the areas that we're looking to change the underlying zoning for and adopt more of a form-based code to try and densify and encourage development away from the industrial land base. I don't have the full picture here, but just to remind you, the reason why we're doing this is because we want to encourage the mixed-use developments that's more compatible with the adjacent and surrounding residential uses in these neighborhoods. This block, though, I don't anticipate being able to change the zoning to comport with that other planning effort in this first round local coastal program update. The timelines for these two documents, these two planning efforts, just don't sync up. And so we're going to have to come back with an amendment to our local coastal program to incorporate that infill planning work that we're doing in this gateway corridor. Another area that I wanted to point to that has some, some real potential and was actually identified in our, our housing element and has been discussed for a number of years as a great infill potential opportunity is the Union Shopping Center, which is currently commercial general. So this commercial general doesn't allow for the types of mixed uses that we want to encourage. And so that's, that's another area where we're likely to have a recommendation to change this to some sort of mixed-use zoning district and/or to comport with some of the concepts that we have for the K Street corridor.
Can I ask about the Little Lakes area? It's now, it looks like industrial commercial. Do you anticipate a change there to natural resources or public facilities or something like that?
Yeah, so a lot of these areas, so that's a great segue. It's almost like we planned this, Vice Chair Mayor. If you go south of the Samoa Boulevard line, this area that's surrounded basically by, you know, mostly industrial commercials, so light industrial, is, has undergone transformation over time and is, you know, designed or at least conceptualized at this point as sort of like our first-line defense for sea level rise in terms of retaining some of the infrastructure in the downtown core. The properties here are all industrial limited or industrial commercial, which allow for a mix of, you know, retail and industrial uses. And it does include, you know, properties such as the Little Lake, which the city is currently, you know, working through some brownfield cleanup for. All of these properties will likely be, in this block, will likely be rezoned to accommodate, you know, more commercial-type uses. They'll have legacy uses. So for example, the Johnson Industries is on this site. And so changing the use so that it can move in more of a, you know, business park direction as opposed to retaining that real explicit industrial use is, is something that's been on the table for some time, concentrating those more industrial uses in the West End area. And specifically, the city's Little Lake Industries parcel will have a mix of different zoning types. Now, I can bring that back as a specific topic, and we can look into more depth at the Little Lake site. But basically, what the city is committed to doing is continuing the, the planning work that the redevelopment agency initiated on this property so that the property would be used for a mix of park and commercial uses. And so there's, there's a lot of, you know, subdivision and, and planning work and, and, you know, improvements that need to be made before that property can realize its potential. It's also important to note that this Little Lakes property has been identified as a, you know, by the proponents of the dog park, is an excellent location for a regional dog park. So there's a lot of different activities planned for this site.
David, has that site been given a clean bill of health?
We are, I am excited to say, applying for the cleanup grant. We just got authorization from the council at their last meeting to submit a application. I believe my colleague Deputy Director Dart is down the hall still working feverishly to get that application turned in timely. And so we've got a grant to clean up. What the end result of the assessment work that we did is we found a small area near the road that was in the location of the former Kil building that was demolished that has some, some elevated levels of dioxide. And so we're proposing to excavate those and dispose of them in a proved facility and then, you know, bring the, the property back to a point where it wouldn't have any kind of restrictions or conditions on it. The, the residential zoning district in this area, we don't have plans to densify this area. We don't have plans to, you know, change, change the zoning here. I expect to see residential medium into the future on these. This is an area where we could take a second look. Now, obviously, this is in an area where, you know, the footprint of the inundation zone is mapped. If we don't do anything to, you know, offset rising tides in this area, then, you know, these areas will be subject to flooding at some point in the future. And so, you know, with the city's long-range plans, you know, not, not in the next 20 years, but with its long-range plans looking out to the far distant future, we do need to develop a strategy for relocating these uses to other places in the City of Arcata and developing strategies that allow these landowners to, you know, take advantage of the uses that they have in the near term, but with the knowledge that, you know, those uses may not be viable in the future. So at this point, we haven't talked about changing the residential nature of this neighborhood. But we have looked at converting the properties that are in this big block of industrial, commercial or industrial limited, as it's currently known in our land use code, to allow visitor serving. So we've talked about, you know, having a visitor-serving overlay on that area where it would encourage uses that, you know, maybe like, you know, hotels or other uses that could benefit from being, you know, near the bay and have, you know, related uses to those activities that you might do on the bay. Right now, you know, with the elevations of the water, those uses are somewhat limited other than, you know, land-based recreation and then small boat recreation. But, you know, the, the future will bring a, you know, a more, a deeper, deeper launch point here. And so it's conceivable that in the future, investments will, will be made to encourage those, you know, you know, boating activities and other, other activities that would need commercial services. So we're looking at, you know, having that overlay in the coastal zone here, and that's something that we've been encouraged to do by the coastal commission because currently we don't have any of that zoning type. One alternative for converting this residential medium-density zoning district into the future is to allow that overlay zone to, to fall onto these properties as well. Now, I don't want to jump to conclusions. I don't want to, you know, make it seem like that is the, you know, a good idea or, or, or the best idea. But I think it's incumbent on us and the community to develop strategies that allow the properties to transition. Commercial properties represent a lower risk in terms of, you know, people's health and safety and their, their ability to, you know, to have peaceable use of their residences than residential districts do. And so if this area were to, you know, flood several times a year and you had commercial uses out here, it's possible they could be designed in such a way that, you know, those uses just didn't occur on those, you know, on those flood days. It's a little harder to say that to someone, hey, why don't you just not go back to your house for a few days because it's going to be flooding for the next several? And so this is, this is an opportunity, an economic opportunity to transition this area around, away from residential and move it into other uses, recognizing that, you know, the transition period, those, those mix of uses may sometimes be at odds. Just wanted to throw that out there as, as a discussion point. These agricultural exclusive parcels are the Christie parcels mostly here, and we don't propose to change those uses or zoning. And then I think lastly, I just wanted to kind of focus on the downtown core. There's a lot of opportunity here. Right now, you know, all of these zoning districts are residential medium. This is, as you all know, very highly built-out area. There's not a lot of vacant property here. But, you know, in terms Um, but, you know, in terms of our our strategy for densifying the downtown, um, this zoning district does limit the number of of uh units that can be built on a site. And it also, uh, because these areas are largely built out, really puts a, uh, you know, financial limitation on any kind of potential investment. Um, if someone knew that they could come in and and, um, you know, either, you know, tear down, rebuild, or, you know, add to a site and, you know, get a substantial uh density bonus, uh, density bump on that property uh based on what the current buildout is, uh, you know, we might start to see uh sort of a natural, uh, you know, densification of that area if we re-zoned it to residential high density. Not saying that we have to take the same approach in every section of town, but this core area right around the downtown where all of the, you know, services are really focused is a a great opportunity to do that. So that's something the commission should deliberate on as well.
David, uh, for clarification on that, you would think that it would go to um high density or medium density and not commercial business district? Or what do you, can you clarify that a little bit more?
Yeah, that's that's absolutely a possibility too. Um, so the concept on the uh, the K Street Corridor is that we would, um, you know, move towards more of a form-based code and allow people to, uh, um, you know, pick and choose. Uh, right now in central business district, for example, um, you can have residential uses, but they can't be on the ground floor and they, uh, unless they're behind the uh primary use. And so some of those limitations that we've established to ensure that, you know, we don't have wholesale conversion of our our business district and to try and protect that business district. Um, you know, we're considering eliminating those restrictions. At some point, there's a a maximum amount of commercial space that you can have for any given number of residential uses. And so, you know, the the concept behind the infill area is to allow the uh the market, the investors, to make the decision about what types of uses are most compatible. When does it make sense for them to, you know, add commercial space versus when does it make sense to them to, you know, just add a whole block of residences? And so it's possible that we could, you know, say, look, let's just make these mixed use zoning districts. Um, I'd have to look into more depth as to, you know, whether those allow for 100% residential uses. Um, but I think that, you know, this this area is traditionally uh residential. It's also very, um, you know, the street sizes are small, the the lots are small, they're they're kind of crammed together. And so, you know, the the scale of commercial uses that could happen in that neighborhood without creating significant conflicts are probably somewhat limited. But it is certainly a discussion that we can have. Um, so kind of, you know, ran a a field of the specific agendized topic. Um, I use the agricultural lands that you see on each of these slides to kind of be a hook for us to talk about and set the stage for discussions in the near future about all of these zoning districts. I'm working with Brian King right now, our our GIS guru uh to try and produce the maps that will be uh needed to to implement the zoning ordinance and in particular, you know, these uh these new zones. So you can take a look at them and start uh making recommendations for some of the sites that we discussed that are that are still open for for question. Any uh questions before I leave the map?
I have a quick question. So there's quite a section in here um on ag property in the coastal zone. And it appears as though the city of Arcata owns the bulk of that ag. The only other two parcels are the Christie one and then, um, I guess there's two. So there's three that are privately owned.
Yeah, there's one here, one here, and here, and then yeah, so there are a couple.
Right. Okay. So that whole section is just really pointing to those exact three properties, right?
Yeah, basically. Um, you know, and I I think that a lot of the discussion that we've had with the Coastal Commission has been, uh, it's been interesting because it 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 moves from them translating their statewide experience and trying to bring in all that statewide precedent that they've developed in other areas and then say, you must adopt this in order to be consistent with the the Coastal Act in Arcata. And then I turn to them and I say, but the city of Arcata owns 99% of the coastal ag. And we're already preventing subdivision and most of that coastal ag is in the sea level rise zone. So do we really need, you know, pages and pages and pages of detail on how we process ag permits when we've already got, you know, limited number and limited potential? That's a really good point. I think, uh, Commissioner Mayor and Commissioner St. Elcox had questions also.
Yeah, thank you for uh that clarification. So so maybe what I was seeing here is this map um with the colors basically includes only areas that are not within these states we changed jurisdiction under um the Coastal Act. Is that correct? Or does it also include some of those areas?
This includes everything, uh, whether it's retained or uh city jurisdiction. Is there an area on the map in particular?
Yeah, you know, the 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 area a little bit to the west of the industrial lands in the purple, um, you know, that 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 area that is kind of to the um east of Villa Way, that that egg parcel is, isn't half that in the coastal zone?
Uh, that is in the coastal zone. It's just not in the city of Arcata.
Oh, okay, okay. I I get it. So, uh, no, I I was wondering also about all of these, um, rules for the ag land. And one of the things that came up in my mind is there's a very clear um definition in the definition section for what development is. But of course, in the agriculturally zoned areas, um, that ag definition includes an absolutely humongous potential for new structures. And what is essentially industrial investment in in ag industries. Um, and I'm, I'm just wondering if there may be, you know, some and some additional work that the city might need to do to, um, indicate a sense of the scope of that kind of investment. Um, and I'm, I'm specifically thinking of some of the controversies that arose um when Cypress Grove built their new facility, which was um all designated agricultural. And I'm looking at, you know, the the spread of, um, it basically, uh, ag industries instructors that right now, um, I think would require coastal development permits because they're development, but would still be considered agriculture. Has 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 the staff looked at any of those types of issues in um possibly putting some additional limits on those uses of coastal ag land?
Um, if I understand the question, you're saying that the term development as defined in the glossary incorporates a whole range of different activities that if 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 applied on agricultural lands would allow for um development that doesn't seem in within the character of agricultural uses?
Um, well, under the current definition, um, it's well within that definition of agricultural uses. But it could um lead to enormous increases in the intensity of uses. And it seems like the only thing that's restricted right now there is that you couldn't put in any new water connections there without messing with the definitions. It would require, you know, that kind of intensification would require coastal development permits.
It would.
And again, you know, a lot of that land is owned by the city, but there is still quite a bit that isn't owned by the city and that might not even need water connections in order to support um very much intensified use that comes under those ag definitions. So I'm, I'm just wondering if if staff have been, you know, kind of thinking through some of those scenarios and wondering um how those definitions work with them.
Yeah, um, you know, I think one of the things that we try to do is to retain uh definitions that are similar across both zoning ordinances. So you don't have a term that means something different across the street if you're in the coastal zone or not. Um, but I think that the development standards, and can you um see my my screen here?
Yeah.
Okay. I just noticed that I have two A's. Sorry to be a little little self-conscious there. So these are the development standards within the uh agricultural lands. And so, you know, I think if you start to read through the detail, um, you're not going to get an industrial scale agricultural um project approved applying these standards. Um, I guess is what I was
So yeah, so that's what I was wondering about. I was thinking of scenarios, um, you know, like the cheese factory. And other than the new water connection, I didn't, I couldn't find anything that would really prevent that.
Yeah. I would also say that, you know, the Coastal Commission hasn't commented on these sections yet. Um, there are um several areas of the coastal zone where I think the city has a strong interest in ensuring that, um, uh, you know, that the the local needs of the community and and the the citizens, um, you know, come first before any coastal act provisions or or policies or considerations. And that what what we're attempting to do through this document is to uh merge those two. Um, let me go back to this uh here. And, you know, I guess what the two points I would make to that are that, you know, number one, you know, back to Dan's point, there's very little land that is in private hands that would have the opportunity for that kind of development. Um, and so, you know, we wouldn't uh necessarily encourage or allow that kind of development. Number two, um, the Coastal Commission staff, when they come back, they may say, hey, look, we want you to, you know, uh, you know, tighten up the controls on ag lands here. We don't feel like you've adequately done it. They maybe bring forward a concern like you've made. And um, I think that to the very few uh in our community who would like to see a very uh high intensity agricultural uses out here, um, you know, we we, uh, this is an area where I think that, you know, you know, we would speak to that portion of the community that that is opposed to that and also an area where, you know, the Coastal Commission, if they say, look, you need to have stricter uh restrictions on agricultural lands out here so that they're not converted, um, I think that we would all, you know, we would defer to that. And so if they have language for us, we're going to probably incorporate it. Um, I don't think, you know, it 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 doesn't, the majority of the ag land is in this sea level rise theoretical, you know, uh, footprint here. Um, and so we don't want to see densification in that area. This this whole uh land use code, uh, I'm sorry, local coastal program update is designed to um, you know, start baby steps towards adaptation and, um, you know, measured retreat out of the coastal zone. You know, obviously, these open greenfields would be the easiest to develop if we wanted to densify and add tons of new units and and welcome, you know, all the uh fire and climate refugees. We could put them all on this big green parcel that the city owns and and have complete control and development of it.
Except, of course, they'd become climate refugees again after that. Um, so, um, and I know there's someone after me, but this is kind of a a a hooked on question. Um, that area in what you're calling, I think, the peninsula of South B and South H Street that's now residential medium density, um, a lot, a lot of those um parcels are actually developed now with single-family homes. And so under the zoning that you would envision, they could basically continue densifying that up until medium density and and or continue to build out um accessory dwelling units on those lots in the zoning that you would envision. In fact, that would increase actual density beyond, far beyond the actual densities that we have right now.
That's, yeah, that's correct. Um, there are, there is some opportunity for additional densification in this zone. There's not a whole lot, but there is some additional uh opportunity for densification in this zone. Um, and adding um uh accessory dwelling units, uh, either to a single family or a multifamily uh project in that area is absolutely allowed by law. Uh, the Coastal Commission has given some guidance for, uh, you know, how how those permits should be issued. Um, and I think that, you know, the the objective here is to, you know, with the, and this sort of gets more into the sea level rise policy, I think, is where where we're looking towards. The objective here is to ensure that, um, we don't come out with a statement that, um, essentially and effectively devalues those properties by saying, look, you can't develop out here anymore. Um, and instead gives, you know, a long planning horizon for those properties to transition over time. They, you know, the, if if someone were to make the decision uh about building an ADU in one of these properties, um, they're likely looking at a very short turnaround return on the investment. They're looking at, you know, if they can, if they can break even within, you know, five years, 10 years maybe. Um, and then if they can, you know, get a return on the investment and maybe start to make some some good money on the property within that, you know, 10, 15, 30-year range, then it's maybe a good, good, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, investment for, you know, these individual homeowners. Um, and so that that timeframe, that 30-year, 40-year, 50-year timeframe, um, you know, we may start to see some additional impacts of sea level rise in terms of flooding and and the mitigation efforts that we need to do in that timeframe. But all of the, you know, best policy that we have to date um suggests that this area will be absolutely 100% viable in that timeframe. And so essentially what the policy does is recognizes that, you know, you're making an investment decision. We're going to give you all the best information that we have at the time. We're going to tell you along the way what our strategies are, what our trigger points are for uh retreat. And, you know, you're going to make those decisions. In addition, we're going to have other policy decisions uh or policies in place that help to transform these areas to make them uh appealing to uh those those investments to transition to some other use that isn't residential over time. Uh, but instead of pulling the wool out, the rug out from under the um the current owners, you know, with this, you know, relatively new uh uh planning development, um, we're going to give them plenty of lead time and say, look, you need to start planning now for what your exit strategy is. And the city is going to work with you to make sure that you have options there. Does that make sense?
Your explanation makes sense. I'm not sure that your policy rationale makes as much sense as it will need to. Um, but we're going to talk about that any in the future.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a whole session on that for sure. And I mean, this is, uh, you know, this is what I've, um, what we brought to the community for the past two years. This has consistently been, um, you know, ratified at planning commission and council meetings, so. And I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner of the State Elcox, you've had your hand up for a long time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you you sort of touched on what I was questioning um regarding the housing, uh, people's investments. You know, um, the rug might get pulled out by possibly their insurance companies not renewing because of where they're located. Um, but what I really wanted to ask about was, I should have mentioned this like half hour ago, is I really wanted to talk about the archaeological and cultural resources chapter real quick. I just want to know how, how is this? Like, give me an example. How would this actually work for an individual? Say, for example, you had a house or a structure and that it was destroyed, to say it was destroyed for some reason, all the way down to the foundation. And so they had to replace the foundation. They couldn't just build it back. Well, that's um, ground disturbing activities. So they would have to apply for this CPD. Ground disturbing activities, so they would have to apply for this CPD permit. How is it, how would this work in real life? Would that, is this permit going to be super expensive? Because as you know, to build a house right now, it's like you need buckets of money to build a house right now. Is this going to be yet another huge cost? So that's one question. And then on the flip side. You talk about if, if they can rebuild it and somehow mitigate any findings that they have, like, how do you mitigate? Something like that, um, finding an archaeological evidence. I mean, that, that's a finite number. I mean, how do you, you can't even do that. How would this actually work for an individual is what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's a, a really great question. Um. You know, the archaeological resources are, you know, important uh to the city and to the state and obviously to, you know, the tribes. Um, and, and making sure that we uh, you know, respect those resources and plan for them is, is very important. There absolutely are situations where owners have uh, you know, discovered at the fact that they uh, that they are in an area that. You know, has resources and it does come with an additional expense. I, I don't want to downplay that. But I do want to point out that, you know, in particular, um, you know, areas, you know, such as. You know, the, you know, whatever referred to as the peninsula, these are uh, you know, filled former tidlands. The potential for finding archaeological resources, finding historical resources is very likely, but um, finding archaeological resources is, is unlikely out here. But notwithstanding, the process is more or less the same for all permit types. And so if a project comes in, you know, it's an accessory dwelling unit. And it's a principally permitted activity and it goes to the building counter, there's really no nexus. We still put into the building permit application, you know, that there's a, you know, there's a blanket. Inadvertent discovery protocol procedure where any, any builder that is uh, you know, excavating soil in the city of Arcata, if they find archaeological resources. They're supposed to notify us and we take appropriate actions to, you know, to address that, that resource. But in general, if it's a, a building permit, there's no added cost. It's just the cost of the building permit. And then if they find resources, then they, then there may be costs associated with that. If it triggers a higher level of review, um, one of the great things that I'm thrilled about getting into our um. Our, our local coastal program is uh the waiver process. So right now, if you get a permit through the coastal commission. If it's a dominus project, there's no impact coastal resources, even if you're outside of a cat X area, you can get what they call a uh waiver. Uh, there's still some process, there's notification, it goes to a hearing to tell the, you know, decision maker, we're issuing this waiver unless you want to pull it. But it doesn't require a coastal development permit. Now that level and the coastal development permit level, we will likely send out referrals uh to tribes. And it's, you know, important to incorporate their referral, their experience and their knowledge and understanding. And in most cases with a project uh where there's not a known site. You know, and that encompasses uh much of this area that we're talking about, the built environment in the downtown. You know, they'll just ask for an inadvertent discovery protocol. And so there's no added expense to include that in the, the permit conditions. There are some areas in the coastal zone that do have archaeological resources. And having this legislation embedded in the coastal uh zoning ordinance. Doesn't change the legal requirements for those property owners. And so it's kind of. You know, there's, there's really no trade off here. The main reason why this is being reiterated in this document. Uh, because if I had my brothers, I would say this doesn't even belong in the coastal zoning ordinance. We already have this covered in our land use code. It's covered by several other laws that I mentioned earlier. But we don't believe we're going to be able to be certified if we don't say something about protecting cultural uh resources. So this, this adopting this is not going to change the regulation uh that's already in place, but that is, that's an important consideration for folks.
David, is this a point that uh you're just looking for more questions or comments from us?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, if there's anything else about the uh, the staff report or the materials. Otherwise, there may be uh attendees who have um. You know, uh, some, some public comment. Commissioner Figaro.
Yeah, David, um, just a quick question regarding the, um, I know how we've kind of essentially. In regards of archaeological, cultural and paleontological resources, we put it all into one basket essentially. What I'm interested in essentially is, um, so are we just, are we trying to, you know, I, I noticed in, in regard to some of the language and the layout of our, of our local coastal program. And how it's developing, are we, are we kind of chatting, you know, how it reflects the sequel checklist in that regards? Because, you know, as of the 2020 checklist versus previous checklists, is paleontological resources actually been pulled out of cultural? And archaeological resources now in the geology and soil section is part, it'd be more applicable and probably within our, our hazard section. Cause that's where it's gone to now. In fact, you know, you discuss paleontological resources now associated with seismic and lipofaction issues and so forth. So I'm just, I have a question regarding that. And then in particular, um, the, you know, the project screening process for paleontological resources is. Different than cultural resources, for instance, and what are recommendations that were, you know, for informational sources in our screening process here? Don't indicate anything related to paleontological finds and so forth. So I think we need to spend a little bit more time making this a little bit more robust. Cause in fact, if we ever discover logical resources in the city of Arcata, this is where we're probably going to find it. And in fact, the findings that we've had had here in the humble Bay area have been in the Bay in regards of Holocene deposits. For instance, we found, we discovered a, um, a mastodon, for instance, in Samoa. So, you know, if we are going to find paleontological resources in the city of Arcadia, or excuse me, Arcata, this is where it's going to be. So I'm just wondering, you know, there's not really much in there. We just, you know, there's a couple, you know, it just kind of gets lumped in there. But I don't know if this is going to be defendable, if it's really going to reflect what the coastal commission really wants.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say again is that, you know, we're trying to streamline this document to uh, you know, the minimum necessary for uh coastal review. Coastal development permit review and still retain all of our underlying uh, you know, uh regulations and zoning ordinances. Um, and so if, if we, you know, if the coastal commission, um, you know, has changes to this that they want to make, you know, we'll certainly bring those back and evaluate them with the, the commission. Uh, we developed these as sort of the, the baseline we felt like was the, you know, minimum necessary in order to satisfy the coastal act. And then if there's anything that we want to do as a community that goes above and beyond that. I would encourage us to incorporate those into our land use code, into the, the zoning ordinance that uh doesn't. Need certification from the coastal commission. The document that, you know, we have full control over implementing. It can go, we can always go above and beyond. In fact, there's a, a, you know, balancing statement in the land use code that essentially says. If there's anything, if there are differences between, um, basically, it starts off by saying that, you know, land use code does not regulate. Coastal development permits. And that the local coastal program has uh equal weight, if not greater weight, if there's a conflict. And so, you know, if we wanted to adopt those more robust procedures, uh, or, you know, drill into the detail in our ordinance. Not just in our practice, but in our ordinance of how we um, uh, you know, address those, those resources. I think that's the place to do it.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I haven't, I didn't spend the time looking at our actual ordinance to see whether or not. We have a robust section enough for paleontology in our actual, in our general plan. So I apologize for not doing that research prior to this meeting, but. From my, from my understanding, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily do, in fact, a majority of, you know, majority of, let's say. You know, working on my other job, you know, I'm the paleontologist for the, you know, the Department of Transportation in District One. It's, I don't, you know, it's slow going, you know, the introduction of actually doing the necessary evaluation for paleontological resources. Partly and so because we live in an area that's so sizingly active, geologically active, a lot of these records are, you know, just obliterated effectively. But in areas, for instance, within the humble Bay, you know, there is a potential. So I'm just, you know. I'm just wondering if we're actually doing our due diligence on this, um, on this piece here. So, uh, just be for thought. Thank you.
No, that's, that's a great uh discussion point. And I, I can't say that, you know, we have a robust paleontological uh program. So I, I do think that that's something we can evaluate as we go through the other uh general plan amendments. And some, some changes in the zoning ordinance to decide where, where does it make sense to add those? I'm just making the bid that it doesn't make sense to add them in the coastal zoning ordinance.
Anybody else?
We do have one public member, uh, they haven't raised their hand. Um, so I'm going to ask. Give maybe just a few minutes to. Uh, to determine if uh. They're going to ask a question or they're just uh watching. Guys, I see no public comment at this point.
Okay, well then, um, are we ready to wrap up this? Portion of the meeting?
Can I ask one more question? Um, there, there are a lot of definitions in here. Um, and many of those definitions have a lot of ands and ors um that make a big difference. If commission members do have comments on any of those um definitions or, or stuff like that, should we get those to staff directly? Rather than fog up our meetings here, um, or should we just wait until this comes back for a public hearing?
Yeah, I think the um, um, you know, I think, you know, we've been noticing these as uh, you know, section by section. But I think that, you know, we're, we're dealing with the coastal zoning ordinance in general. And so it's. Uh, I'm, I'm treating it like everything is fair game at this point. Uh, these aren't public hearings, so we have a little bit more uh latitude. And I guess if you wanted to, you know, if you have 20 definitions you wanted to go over, maybe uh send those to me and then I'll be prepared to uh, address them. If you just have one or two, I mean, it's, it's up to you and the commission if you wanted to address those now.
I, I think the commission would probably be bored silly. And so um, I, I, I will. If I can, uh, save them for uh. Those of you who are paid to be bored silly.
Well, thank you, Judith. I would like to know more about the mastodon in Samoa one of these days though, but we can wait on that too. So are we ready to close this item? Or are there any last questions or comments? John's got one.
Yeah, uh, Christian brought up a, a, a point that I had noticed also. In the uh, uh, in this section on archaeological and cultural resources. It's kind of a hodgepodge addressing essentially three different things. And uh. You know, it talks, our, the title. Talks about cultural resources, but the, the actual. Specifics in the section refer to Native American cultural resources. So, you know, my suggestion would be to change the title of the section. To note that it's archaeological paleontology, paleontological and Native American cultural resources that, that it's what it's about. Also, uh, under the applicability section. The, to, to uh fall under this section, one of these two uh. Uh situations has to exist. The, the project is within general location of a previously identified. Potential archaeological site and or Native American tribal cultural resource. Uh, or an initial study finds the evidence of a potentially significant archaeological slash paleontological resource on the site. I think the paleontological, paleontological resource should be mentioned in, in uh the first, in the A section also. And then the uh down below, we got to the project screening. Uh, it says the department shows, oh, the department, that's one thing I've wondered about as I, as I read these. It talks about the department without saying what department it is. So I don't know whether, you know, whether that's a planned. Way of, of speaking or, or, or maybe came from a coastal commission. I don't know. Anyway. The initial screening, it says the department shall screen CDP applications to determine if the project may have an invert adverse impact. On an archaeological paleontological and or Native American tribal cultural resource. But up above. The screening uh is defined by uh A and B. And so. The, the, you know, this, this uh statement is almost implying that there might be other reasons. But if according to this, there are only two reasons that the would uh. Make a project fall under the uh, the, the requirements in this section. So, I mean, it's just, to me, uh, it's not entirely clear. I think uh. You know, when you're, when somebody reads this. And I have to admit that, that I haven't closely looked at, at this uh section before in the land use code. But it should, it should be clear and logical and uh. So that there's no question about uh, what is meant.
Yeah, that's a, a really great point, Commissioner Barstow. And I think, you know, for one, we can either modify uh. The applicability subsection B and or add a subsection C. Because really the way that we get our information more often than not is through referral process to the uh, the local Wiat area tribes. And so um, we have a, a rubric for uh, depending on the level of environmental document that we're doing for consulting with them. On, on projects that are happening uh in, in the city. And so I'll, I'll, I'll add something to that effect. And to your point about the department, it's just, it's defined in um, I think, the first chapter. That the department refers to the community development department. So it's shorthand. I asked the. I asked the um, our code writer to try and remove acronyms. I feel like acronyms in general uh. Don't help people to understand what they're reading. And so instead of acronyms, I like little shorthand words like department. We stuck with CDP because, you know, that's pretty. Ubiquitous throughout the document. So by the time you've read it. You, you'll understand it. But I think that may be uh one of the only acronyms apart from Sequoia that you'll see. So I think, um, you know, to, to your point though, John, the information sources that we used in that initial screening. Are the Northwest Information Center. These, these are in B, subsection B of O three O. Comments and recommendations from culturally affiliated Native American tribes, including Wiat, Bear River Band, Runabell, Retrea and the Blue Lake Retrea. And the report of a Native American culturally sensitive location by the Native American Heritage Commission. Or archaeological and Native American culturally sensitive locations compiled for the city and the Northwest Information Center, other reputable sources. And I, I guess to your point, you know, this doesn't talk about paleontological. Resources either. I, I'm not sure how we would screen those out through this process. But I'll be, I'll be talking there with Commissioner Figaro about that.
Sounds like a homework assignment or a sidebar for you guys. Anything else? David, do you have anything else on this? David, do you have anything else on this?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Well, we can close that item. And the last thing we have is correspondence and communications. Does the city have anything?
I have just one thing that I'm really excited about and wanted to share with you all and the rest of the community, the thousands in the community that are watching us here tonight. The Arcata Main Street is putting on a really cool Halloween car parade. So it's going to be on the plaza, and you get to drive through, and there'll be directed traffic and, and events that you can go and see. There'll be people dressed up and, and it'll be like a haunted house, but a haunted plaza sort of a thing. They're going to have, you know, some treats for folks, some COVID-safe treats. They've gone through the whole process with the county to make sure that this event is COVID-safe. And it should be a, it should be a hoot. So come on down on Saturday. Check out the Arcata Main Street's website to find out information on the event itself. Dress up and, and drive down with your friends and family.
Great, thank you. Any commissioner comments? I have one question for you, David. For those of us who have indicated that we would still like to receive the paper copies, are you interested in having these envelopes come back your direction? They're starting to pile up. I know we used to reuse them.
Yeah, if you could filter those back to us on occasion, that'd be great. You don't have to do a one-for-one trade. We'll still give you your packet if you haven't brought back your, back your envelope.
Okay. All right. And you heard from us all about whether or not we want digital or paper?
Yeah, I, I believe everybody who wanted a paper copy responded. And Vice Chair Mayor, I hope you got yours. I wasn't sure if you had CC'd Kala. Okay, fantastic. Got yours.
Okay. It looks like we have an adjournment, then. Thank you all.